It is 5:00 PM on Monday, May 12, 2025. This is a regular board meeting for the Monroe School District. Present are myself, President Bumpus, Director Barnes, Director Campbell. We have Director Ed Scorn and Director Whitfield, Superintendent Sean Woodward, Student Representative Sophia Willett, and District Leadership Team, School District Staff, as well as members of the community. Members of the public can log into the regular board meeting using the Zoom link attached to tonight's agenda that is found on the Board Docs website. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to tonight's meeting. We are happy to have you join us. All comments during tonight's meeting are audio recorded and will be available online on our website. This is in addition to the written minutes. Please understand that while it may appear the board is moving quickly on important matters, there have been previous discussions on these issues, either in earlier meetings or in board workshops, which are also open public meetings. Each director has had ample time to study the issues, ask appropriate questions, and obtain satisfactory answers from the superintendent, his staff, or through outside research. Those wishing to address the board during public comments must turn in a public comment form prior to the start of the meeting at 5:00 PM. Any form submitted after the meeting has started will be held for the next meeting to address the board at that time. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 3.04 or 3.05, Approval of the Agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda dated May 12, 2025?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the agenda dated May 12, 2025.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion in the second to approve the agenda dated May 12, 2025. All in favor, raise your hand. The Agenda Item has passed 5 to 0. Moving on to Agenda Item 4.0, Presentations, and we have 4.01 National History Day, Sky Valley Education Center students. I would like to invite Environmental Studies teachers at SVEC Sabrina Shaw and the SVEC students up to the podium for a presentation.
Hello, thank you for having us tonight. I'm going to have the girls introduce themselves in just a few minutes. But just to give you a sort of a highlight here is National History Day. This is our third year as Sky Valley Education Center. Participating in National History Day, the contest for the region is actually held at our school, which Karen Rosenkrantz has been amazing with supporting us as we move through that. And these three girls have earned the opportunity to attend the national conference in Washington, DC. So it's quite an honor if you think about, it's like the top, you know, 3% or 4% of people in the nation. And what National History Day is, is it's a program that's created in order to develop historical thinking skills. It's been around, it just celebrated its 50th anniversary last year, and the students get to compete at Washington, basically Washington, DC. We stay at the University of Maryland. And they have spent the entire year studying topics connected to the national theme. This year's theme is rights and responsibilities. And so I'm going to have them tell you a little bit about their project that they did. They can choose a documentary, a paper, an exhibit, a historical performance, or a website. And these represent the best of the best, and they happen to be Monroe students. So I want to congratulate them.
Hi, my name is Bryn. I'm a ninth grader at Sky Valley, and this is my third year doing National History Day. This year, I chose to do my project on Makaw Whaling and their fight to uphold their treaty rights, which they have been performing for as long as we can remember, since time immemorial. History Day, I think, is a great way to learn lots of skills. One of my favorite was definitely going to the University of Washington to learn how to use like a college library and navigate in like on a college campus to find primary sources and use like a microform reader and look through like old documents and newspapers. And I thought, so that was one of my favorite things. I don't know, I thought that was really fun.
Hi, my name is Imogen Shaw. I am a seventh grade student at Sky Valley Education Center. This is my third year doing History Day as well. I have, my exhibit is titled Fish Wars, The Confluence of Tribal Rights and Government Responsibility. And I, like Bryn said, have learned a lot of valuable skills while doing History Day, one of which is the, I don't know, what did I say? Oh, right, interviews is, I've learned to like interview people and be interviewed. And I think that's an important skill for job interviews and stuff.
I'm Scarlett. I'm an eighth grade student at Sky Valley, and I did a historical paper on Ida Tarbo, which is this journalist from Progressive Era. Basically, she publicated, she had a publication called The History of San Oil Company, which basically explained how monopolies, like San Oil Company, was not good for the economy and also just like was disrupting a bunch of rights and for workers and consumers. And I think I agree, there's a ton of skills that are very useful that you learn. And one of them that I found really useful was learning how to paraphrase college-level sources and archives and turning that into analysis, pictures, quotes. I think that would definitely benefit throughout your educational process and opportunities.
We have time for questions, but we are going to leave their exhibits up as well. And I'm going to come back and collect them tomorrow so that if you have time to peruse them and paper, we'll leave the paper laying. It's just, you know, papers are easy to carry and easy to pack on the flight, but not as engaging as a picture to look at there. But I did want to let you know that this morning we found out that Imogen's exhibit, this one on the Fish Wars, was chosen to be displayed at the Smithsonian. So that's quite to me. So first seventh grader, not so shabby. So but if you have questions for them, we have a few minutes, they'd love to answer them.
Yeah, I got one. Well, first off, I took a look at the exhibits before the meeting. They're very impressive. Just the content, the storytelling, the quality is top-notch. So congratulations on that. My question is, have you chosen your national subject yet? And if so, what is it?
For next year or?
I thought you said when you go to Nationals, they get to choose.
Can you take this project?
Oh.
The one that they've been working on all next, all year. And so they competed at the regional level, were able to make changes, competed at the state level, made some changes, and then now they'll go to the national level. And both of them have been working on changes in between.
I really don't want to do a whole new exhibit.
Although I will say she has chosen her topic for next year already, having that like in the forefront of her mind, which scares me a little bit, but you know.
I'm from the Olympic Peninsula, so the Makaw Whaling is extremely interesting to me because I have friends who are Makaw. And so I was curious for you, as you learned about their fishing rights and things like that, what was the most interesting thing that you learned about the Makaw Whaling?
I thought it was like, I mean, if you like asked me like a year ago if I supported like hunting whales and killing whales, like I would probably say no. So I think that's something that I thought was very inspiring and stuff was like getting to kind of have my perspective like shift after like hearing all these like perspectives from Makaw tribal members and how like culturally important and like how like strong of a tradition this is for their tribe. So kind of like having my personal perspective maybe like shift over my months of research and like getting to interview people and kind of like seeing how like integral that is. I guess, I don't know, it's kind of a vague answer, but I thought that was like.
That's powerful. The more you study a subject and you watch your own opinions change because of the information that you have and the impact that you have with intersecting with other people groups is really huge. So that's awesome.
Okay, what was the, what thing did you enjoy doing most from your projects? What was the thing that you thought was the most fun? And then also for Imogen and, oh my goodness. Bryn?
Bryn, yeah.
Yeah. No, the Scarlett, that's right. Sorry, Scarlett, I forgot your name for a second. But for Imogen and Scarlett, kind of same question. What was the thing that you learned that you was kind of like, oh, aha, I didn't really know this. So this was the most interesting thing that you came across in all of your studies and research?
So it's kind of like similar to Bryn's. If the like, I don't know, I'm not sure ethic is the right word, but it's if I had been at, like if I had been alive during this time, like a teenager's young person, like older person, I don't think I would have supported them. And I think I love animals, like just finding, so I think that I would have been against their fishing. So it's, after learning this, it's like they do have their sustainable fishing. And they like, they have like kept the salmon on for all this life, for all this time, and like they've lived in, like they've lived in common with salmon and the Russian fishermen and the going on. That's, I just think the concept of like how battles, like battles were going on is the most important. And like interesting thing I've learned is just how. For me, something that was super interesting was how much people didn't understand during like the Progressive Era, like industrial America, of like how much they didn't know what was happening like in the government and like just throughout the country was really interesting and surprising to me. It was basically a journalist fact that were only able to like report specific things, otherwise their career would be over. So I think Ida Tarbo was really like inspirational for going out of those like more of this kind of beliefs, trying to expose this huge company that had so much power. It was really interesting to see how much she like impacted the public's opinion and just how much she was like one of the first people to really like use specific resources and just able to convey such a compelling story to convince so many people to realize the issue with monopolies and how that impacts their lives, not just like some other sort of like lower class men or something like that.
Okay, and then the thing that you enjoyed the most out of doing your entire project?
Um, I mean, I already kind of said this, but I really enjoyed going to like book resources on a college campus. I thought that was like really inspiring and like, I don't know, like I could see myself like being there in like the next, like, I don't know, five years, like next, in the five years. Um, I don't know. I thought that and like getting to use all the different like resources that they have there was like, well, it was super helpful for my project because they have like so many sources. And since I have like a local topic, it's like they have like even more. But um, yeah, and then also we got to, I think, I don't know if all of us, but I got to go down to special collections there and like pull like the boxes and like look through like the little documents and stuff. Now it's really fun. What would you pick up here? My favorite part was probably either going down to like archives,
Washington State Archives.
Washington State Archives in Olympia. And like the Judge Bolts Robes, who's like the old decision, was the one that decided it. They had just pulled his robe off exhibit. And so the archivists pulled them and they stood over me while I looked through all the documents and testimonies. So that was very cool. But I also, I had interviews at, in Yakima with a tribal chairman who had watched, like he was like seven and he watched Salamah Falls, like he covered water when the dams went in and the dams closed. So that was really powerful to care about in just watching and like hearing the signs after that. I definitely also really enjoyed going to the college campus. I think it was definitely a good like way to like see myself going to college, like Bryn said. And then I also think, think the special collections were definitely a really cool opportunity because I think it was super fun just to see what it looked like and to see all the whole documents, to see how that tech process works. And I think, I didn't get like to do any interviews like they did, but I think just like researching and going into much deeper research than I usually do with other projects was just a really fun experience. And like, just like overall, just learning all the skills was more funner than like the actual project because I can apply all the skills to future projects and like current projects. And I think just the entire like opportunity was really beneficial to my learning and my education.
Well, thank you three for those incredibly well-thought-out answers. I know that at the spectacular, when I was walking around looking at everything, I enjoy the presentation boards that you do. I mean, they're so immaculate. And the things that I learned looking through them, not just with what you write, but pictures to go with, and they're incredibly engaging. You three represent the school district in Sky Valley so well, and you should be incredibly proud of what you have accomplished and what you continue to do. I'm very excited to see what you do next year and to hear how you do at Nationals. Congratulations to all three of you.
Thank you, and thank you for your support. We couldn't do it without the support of our district. So it's much appreciated.
I have one quick question, and you may have already mentioned it. I'm sorry if I missed it. When do you go to Nationals?
I believe on the 7th of June, and the competition is basically all week. There's different days for different aspects of the competition. And so I think it's June 12th is the award ceremony. So we'll make sure you all have a link. So if you desire to watch, they have applied for special awards. So that's one of the other things that History Day has. For example, Imogen, you all three won special, Imogen and Scarlett won special awards for like their research. So there's awards that you can win that are like archive awards. If it's in one, like Best in Washington, like Washington State History Topic, and then the Archive Award, and then you read journal, historical literature, historical literature. So there's those options. So they could get called on for that, or they could also win, you know, Best in the Nation. So.
Wow.
Yeah, so cross your fingers.
That's so cool. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, Agenda Item 4.02. I would like to introduce Managing Director of Public Finance for DA Davidson, Corey.
Director Bumpus, Vice President Campbell. Members of the board, can you hear me okay? Can everybody hear me okay? How about now? Can you hear me okay?
Okay, switch your microphones. Can you hear me now? How about now? Testing, one, two, three. Can you hear me now? I see Jesse working on something. Can you hear me now? Testing. Testing, Jesse, can you hear me now? Testing, testing.
He's working on it, Corey.
Okay, thank you. Testing. Yep, are we in? Excellent, thanks for your mind. I appreciate the opportunity to present via Zoom tonight, but I'll tell you, I think each time I'm there in person or via Zoom, I'm presenting after students. And it's very difficult to present after students that have materials that will go to the Smithsonian, but I'm going to do my best here. I'm going to go ahead and put a screen sharing on here. I'm not sure if this made it into the board packet. We were at conferences last week. But I'm grateful to share an update to the board today. This was part of the bond delegation resolution to share an update with the board in person at the subsequent board meeting. And I feel like we have some really great news to share for the taxpayers of the Monroe School District. I appreciate working in collaboration with Superintendent Woodward and CFO Hunt. We had some challenging times with the tariffs. I'm not sure if you all logged in at the beginning of April to your 401K programs, but we had a little bit of a headwind, as we call it in our industry. I feel like we had, at the time, we weren't aware of this, but we were really aggressive going into the market on the scheduled date, and we actually happened to be in a lull between two market highs. So we don't really try and get into the habit of timing the market, rather trying to meet the taxpayer savings target and the board targets and going when we're ready. And it actually worked out really well in this instance. There's many municipal issuers at the time right now that were scheduled to price refunding bonds at the same time as you that are still on hold and not meeting their taxpayer savings goals. So there was a lot of market volatility and uncertainty, but thanks to the direction of your superintendent and your CFO, we were able to proceed and procure some significant savings. A little bit of color commentary on the bond refunding, the day itself. We were able to share a software that showed the sales and orders live. And so the team, the admin team can watch along. We had 127 orders for your bonds from 32 unique institutional investors across the US. You actually even had a retail individual, locally to your community purchase bonds. And I wish there weren't privacy rules that could share that person's faith in the district willing to put their finances in your hands. We had four investors place orders for more than $20 million each, and they won a majority of your bonds. And that's an incredible testament to your financial situation and your financial management from your leadership team. Due to this demand, on the day we went into pricing, we were able to reduce yields live. So we went in with a target. And because of this demand during an extremely volatile period of time, we were able to essentially raise the prices of your bonds during the sale and drop the yields. That change during pricing that was witnessed by Superintendent Woodward and CFO Hunt saved the district an additional $203,000 the day of the sale. And as I scroll down here, you will see the taxpayer savings moved to the top of the screen. The results of the bond refunding were to save taxpayers $2.5 million at a true interest cost of 3.61%. Those bonds are scheduled to be called this June 1st. So the bonds have been priced, they have closed, the money is in escrow right now under your name, earning interest for your taxpayers while we wait for that June 1st call date. The percentage of the savings of these bonds was 6.08%. If you recall, the board adopted a target of 5%, so we exceeded the savings target. And then in starting in the year 2026, the very next tax year, you will save an average of $287,000 per year through 2034. So really just here to share the amazing outcome and send a congratulations and my sincere gratitude to the leadership team at the district for all their hard work and all their efforts to save taxpayers' money for the next decade.
Corey, that's not Smithsonian-worthy, but it's worthy of an applause. Thank you.
Thank you. So happy to answer any questions to the board. I know it wasn't a fun project for your leadership team, but they performed admirably, and they kept everything on schedule and didn't panic in the sign in the face of adversity, and really happy with the outcome.
Yeah, no questions, all praise. Thank you so much, Brenda. Thank you. Appreciate you.
Okay, good evening. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate you.
Thank you so much. Okay, from good news to more good news, we have Recognition of Teacher Appreciation Week. This is Agenda Item 5.01. Teacher Appreciation Week is, well, was May 5th through May 9th. Last week, we celebrated Teacher and Certificated Staff Appreciation Week, and the board would like to extend our deepest gratitude for all you do. Your dedication to our students and families, both in and beyond the classroom, is what makes our schools thrive. We honor your hard work, not just during this Appreciation Week, but every day. Thank you for your care and commitment to inspiring the next generation. Thank you for all that you do. And I have a certificate here. And there's Robin.
Thank you.
I brought Jess Killen in. Our, thank you, our Vice President of Monroe Education Association with me, President Bumpus.
Um, indulge me for a sec. I just have a few words of gratitude on behalf of our members. So good evening, President Bumpus, Board Director Superintendent Woodward, and community members. On behalf of the teachers and certificated staff of the Monroe Education Association, thank you for this recognition. We deeply appreciate the acknowledgement of our work and commitment to our students. Each day, our educators show up driven by a shared purpose to support, uplift, and educate every student in our care. Our members make a real difference every day, bringing their dedication, skill, and genuine care to every school community across our district. Your recognition tonight affirms for us that our work is valuable, that students thrive when staff are supported, and that when we, when we invest in educators, we invest directly in student success. Thank you again for this acknowledgement. We hope it's a foundation for continued collaboration grounded in respect for the students and the professionals who make our schools work every day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Agenda Item 5.02, Staff Recognition, Employees of the Month for April. The Monroe School District Honor Roll Recognition Program is aimed at recognizing employees, for exemplifying our core values through their service to our students, staff, families, and community. Congratulations to the 32 exceptional staff members nominated in April for their outstanding service to our students, families, and community. Let's celebrate their dedication and hard work. Please join us in congratulating our employee, April, Employees of the Month. Katie?
We will start with our Classified Employee of the Month, Katie Diamond. Come on down. She's even got a cheering section. I love it. Katie is a library specialist at Park Place Middle School. And Katie, I want to read the nomination that was submitted for you as well. It was really awesome. Said, "The core value exemplified is being student-centered." And this example, I think, is a, is a perfect way to live that out and see that. It says, "Ms. Diamond consistently creates a warm and welcoming environment for students in Park Place Library. Recently, I sent a very upset sixth grader with her broken Chromebook. Ms. Diamond took the time to comfort and reassure the student. She also took the time to talk with the student and found they had things in common, which helped to calm the student. Her ability to connect with the student is truly exceptional. Many students seek out Ms. Diamond in the library, whether to talk or assist with various projects she has underway. Ms. Diamond is an outstanding library specialist. She deserves to be recognized for the positive impact she has had on students and school community." Awesome, thank you so much.
Okay, and our second, our Certificated Employee of the Month is Alice Westbrook. She's a counselor at Monroe High School, and I do not see her here, but I did have the honor of being there when this award was presented to her. And I've gotten to know her a little bit over the past month, sharing in some javelin duties at the track meets and whatnot. And she is just a ray of sunshine. We are so lucky to have her. But I'm going to go ahead, and I'm going to read this. "The core value exemplified is student-centered. Alex is truly the definition of student-centered, but the truth is, she shines in all of the district's core values. I have three children in the district, one of whom is a graduating senior. So we've worked with many counselors over the years. Without question, Alex stands out as the best counselor any of my kids have ever had. Her ability to connect with students, identify the path that will help them succeed, and then actively support them in putting that plan into action is exceptional. She's also incredibly knowledgeable and consistently answers questions in a way that's both helpful and easy to understand. Her warmth and kindness make her approach to counseling especially effective and reassuring, something families truly appreciate when navigating the often complicated high school pathway options. Throughout the process, her communication with parents is clear, timely, and thoughtful. Alex's compassion and energy for her role are truly inspiring. Monroe High School is incredibly fortunate to have her, and the students in her Alpha are equally lucky to have her in their corner. And I couldn't agree more. So a huge congratulations again to Alex." Hey, Agenda Item 5.03, Consideration of Donations. And we have Ms. Sophia Willett to help us out.
First, Mary L. Hoffman has donated a $500 monetary grant for the sole and express purpose of paying for the Salem Woods Elementary 4th Grade Classes Field Trip to the Northwest Railway Museum. And then PrimeParty.com donated a full palette of Geromino Stilton Party And then PrimeParty.com donated a full pallet of Geromino Stilton Party Supplies to the district's office to be distributed to the schools. Bearcat Pride has donated a three hundred and fifty dollar monetary grant for the Stolen Express Purpose of the Zoology Field Trip to the Woodland Park Zoom. And then Bearcat Pride has donated a three hundred and sixty seven dollar and fifteen cents monetary grant to purchase ten trail cameras and ten memory cards. And Bearcat Pride has also donated a seven hundred dollar monetary grant to support seven students to attend the National Journalism Conference in Seattle. And then Chain Lake Express Wash has donated three car wash gift cards for staff appreciation.
Thank you, Sophia. And then we're right back to you for Student Representative Report, just highlighting some of the student activities throughout our district.
Okay, first, Key Club is having homelessness supply drive through May where they will be collecting hygiene products like soap, toothpaste, deodorant, and sunscreen. For more information, you can go to Benny the Bearcat Instagram. And then the high school currently has AP testing this week, and the last exams will be this week. And then for sports, varsity track starts Wesco League this week, and then we'll advance to districts next week. And then girls varsity, um, I think, girls varsity tennis starts districts this week on Tuesday, May thirteenth. And then girls and boys varsity golf also starts districts this week on Tuesday, May thirteenth. And then girls varsity softball also has districts Tuesday, May thirteenth against Danwood. And for events, Spring Fling is June sixth from four to ten PM at the high school. The theme is Music Festival, and there will be a kickball tournament.
Any? Any questions for Sophia?
How was prom?
Okay, it's working. Um, prom was super good. ASB did a really good job. It was at one of the farms in Snohomish. Yeah, it was at Thomas. Um, and like, they did a really good job at it, and there was like enough room for everybody. My group was massive. We had a group of like forty five people. And so doing anything was super hard, but I really enjoyed it, and I'm glad I got to go.
My question is less fun. So tell me about SBA testing. Is that going on this week as well?
Yeah, it is going on this week. I'm pretty sure Tuesday, we have a two hour late start for kids that don't have to do it. I'm pretty sure it's juniors.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I'm glad I don't have to do it. No more, no more Sock Testing for me.
I don't know that there's a lot of students that look forward to it, but it is super helpful to see where our district is, which is good.
Awesome. Thank you, Sophia. Okay, we have no public comment. Um, Agenda Item six point zero one, Project Lead the Way, CTE Robotics Curriculum. And we have Ms. Jennifer Murphy, Director of Elementary Education, presenting this first reading.
All right, thanks. Um, so you're going to be seeing a lot of me in the next, this meeting and the next one. We've got a lot of curricular items up and coming. Um, today, we're going to do um Project Lead the Way, and then we'll do the next one too, which is also in this, which is ARC. So um, we will get this slide presentation to you if you don't already have it. Um, I gave it to Holly this morning, but uh between, okay, great, between now and the next read, um, there's some information that you might want to uh look through. And if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out. So in this uh slide, there's a um a link to directly to the um, to the website where the information is. So what is Project Lead the Way Engineering? It's a nine twelve STEM curriculum. Students engage in real world problem solving. It is, there's lots of different types of courses under the engineering of Project Lead the Way. We are looking specifically at the digital electronics course, and this'll um, in this one, students like are engaging in circuitry. Um, and it is going to be used in robotics too. We already use Project Lead the Way in another course, um, but not this specific digital electronics. Why is it needed? It aligns to the state approved framework, so in order to have our equivalencies, we have to have Project Lead the Way. Um, and of course, this robotics two is part of a two-part series for a graduation pathway for students. And it gives students affordable access to practice their real world skills. Um, Brad included some screenshots for all of you, so as you're exploring, you can kind of see the difference between what the teacher can see on the platform. And how kind of the lessons work. And then um, what students see as well, and then additional embedded um skills for um college and career readiness that are embedded in it. I spoke with Shannon in Darby this morning, and um, one of the things that we want to note about Project Lead the Way is kind of, right now, it's kind of piecemeal for robotics two. They get a little bit of the equipment over here, a little bit of the core course material over there. This helps to kind of streamline everything, so not only are they getting the online access and Brad's getting the training that he needs, but it also provides a list of all the consumables that they need, and they kind of come prepackaged, so they don't have to like piecemeal all of it together. Um, this kind of gives the overview of a specific unit for you to dig into. And then kind of always, everybody wants to know what's the cost. So it is an ongoing annual license for the materials, consumables, and student licenses, so that twenty five thousand is ongoing. The twenty six hundred is just uh related to Brad's first year of professional development. And all of this kind of comes out of CTE funding. Um, questions about Project Lead the Way?
Thank you for including the numbers in there. I always have many questions.
Yeah.
Twenty five grand a year for licensing?
Yes, it comes, it's for thirty student licenses, all the consumables and materials. So if you think about the amount of money we spend on workbooks, um, it's really not that much different than what we would spend on that. And this is actually the circuitry consumable products.
And then uh with that, is, do we have room in our budget to add that into it? I know we have a pretty deep CTE budget, is that?
Yeah, um, Shannon was planning forward for considering this would be kind of an ongoing cost, and she said it actually saves a little bit of money compared to what they normally have to spend for this course because they have to piecemeal it, so this kind of actually saves a little bit.
So it's a net savings, it's not on top of initial?
Correct.
But you're already spending, okay.
Correct.
And how does the cost compare to other options?
Well, there aren't really any other options for robotics two. If we want to have a state-approved framework, we have to use their state-approved material, and this is it. Um, in terms of what we've been using um on the previous framework, it, it's about the same.
And do we know the breakdown between licenses and consumables?
I don't, I don't have that. I can get it from Brad if we need it.
I'm just curious. I don't think we need to, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, we can move on to six point zero two, American Reading Company for Dual Language. K five curriculum with again, Ms. Jennifer Murphy.
Yeah, I'm going to invite Hugo and Deb up too. Um, they're going to be really knowledgeable, so this is going to be a little bit different. It's a lot more comprehensive than for one course. We're talking about kind of our Spanish language arts curriculum um for our dual language programming. So what is ARC? It's a comprehensive literacy curriculum aligned to the Spanish core content standards. Um, it aligns to the authentic Spanish and English learning progressions. It includes embedded assessment and progress monitoring in addition to student and teacher materials. I'm going to let Hugo and Deb take over kind of why this is needed and what our journey is so far.
Hey, good afternoon. Uh, thanks for having us. So um, to give you context and not uh put you guys to sleep, uh, I'm going to give you a Cliff Notes version. In the nineteen fifties, mid nineteen fifties, there's a book written by a guy named Rudolph Fleisch. Um, the title of the book was Why Johnny Can't Read It, What You Can Do About It. And basically, um, I'm giving you that as a context because it's what started the reading wars. If you've read anything in uh what's going on now, I mean, uh, he said that basically in his uh meta-analysis, ninety percent of uh kids in third grade could not read ninety percent of what was in front of them um, or the language that they spoke. And so uh during the IMC meeting, Director Whitfield and I were talking a little bit about that whole language versus balanced literacy approach. And so that book, combined with that uh philosophy, is what led us to this slide. So um, we're going down ARC because we're trying to uh implement um uh Spanish. I mean, Spanish is the backbone of the dual language program. Uh, we're trying to remove the duplicative and redundant approach. Time allocation is super important, especially as you get to fourth and fifth grade where it's still fifty fifty because that's hard to do in half the time. Um, and then at the end of the day, um, teaching Spanish and uh teaching in Spanish are two different things, and they're not related to English. Um, and uh, and so uh, language equity is where we want to focus. Um, American Reading Company is the closest thing uh out in in terms of curriculum uh and materials that uh can help us meet this need. Um, and so really focusing on language and honoring that and creating some equity within the program. Before this, and some of you've already heard this, uh, heard me talk about it, we've taken, we've taken Lucy Calkins, which is the ELA material that we've had in the building, and our teachers have literally taken the English version, translated it on the fly, created their own materials, and then tried to teach that in Spanish. Um, the part that's wrong with that is it's a curriculum meant to teach English. It's not a cu- a curriculum to teach language acquisition. And so in the dual language program, we're teaching language acquisition and content knowledge all at the same time. Uh, so again, even more important why we uh embark on this, and so we've been able to pilot uh ARC at K two. Um, and we're hoping to make it, uh, well, we're making it permanent, and I'll get to that slide here in a little bit. Um, just to give you an idea of what, when I talk about language, um, I'm going to go through these slides really quickly. Um, Spanish is a really transparent language. There's thirty graphemes, twenty two phonemes. Um, if I pick on English, you have twenty six graphemes, forty four phonemes, twenty five consonant sounds, and nineteen vowel sounds. Um, there's a great video on YouTube with um, I Love Lucy, and uh her husband is trying to read a book. I don't know if you've seen it. It's like a three-minute clip, and uh the whole premise of the video is uh the husband, I think it's uh, what's Desi, um, is trying to read the words O U G H. So if you think about all the words in English that end in O U G H, and how many sounds just that makes alone, um, this is what it's referring to. Um, and so uh, when we put these side by side, and I'll go to this slide right here, um, this is what we're talking about. And so because uh Spanish is such a transparent knowledge or transparent language, kids should be able to be in books and be reading sooner than they would be in English because English is an opaque language. Uh, so you have both sides, and I know it's a little bit small, but basically, teaching the vowels, teaching the consonants that transfer, uh, and then teaching um, uh, the non-transferable skills. I think it's the third box on both sides. And then coming up with the time of how to leverage that um across the, across the board. This is important, and this approach is important because we're teaching kids uh not uh content knowledge, and we're teaching kids uh language acquisition at the same time. If I put my uh Spanish teacher hat on, I would start completely different and just teach you A R E R and I R verbs. And if I teach you how to break the code on those verbs, I can then teach you articles and put sentences together because you already have the knowledge uh to do the rest. With our kids coming in, we're literally starting from scratch. And so that, just to give you a context on both ends of that paradigm. This slide right here is just um some of the Scarborough's Rope and how we've beefed it up. Um, yeah, it's a lot of the research out there right now uh from all the um people that are doing this work in dual language programs. And uh, the, the equity piece that falls in and of trying to honor the home language, the language that they're learning in in school, and knowing when and where to apply both. Um, yeah, uh, questions? I know I went through that pretty quick.
I'm literally teaching M L L uh certification courses for ESL endorsements at Northwest University right now, and you're speaking my level language. It makes me excited to see us moving down this road. Thank you for doing this work, you guys.
Yeah, thank you.
Makes me excited to see this.
There's, there is also a link in this to ARC. The tricky part with ARC is there's a Spanish component and an English component, so as we are moving up the grade levels, we'll be purchasing both components. In K two, we've only purchased so far the Spanish that we piloted. Um, so I want to let you know what that kind of cost looks like, because when we're talking about literacy, we're talking about a much more expensive product. Um, that that's because it doesn't just contain teacher's guides and student materials, it also contains all the books, um, classroom libraries, the books that students read, and so that's a lot of um printed materials. Um, so the K two pilot cost us around a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars for materials and about seventy five hundred dollars in professional development. We've already paid for that out of our dual language grant funding. Um, in order to onboard uh to the new scope and sequence and get our teachers the training they need in order to use the materials in a dual language environment, that's going to, the cost of the professional development for that is around twelve thousand dollars, and we um, no, it's not. And we are using one of the uh authors of ARC to help us with this. And then our third through fifth grade materials will uh cost roughly between forty five and sixty thousand dollars per grade as we onboard each grade. And why I say roughly is it really depends on how many of those student books are in each kind of grade level, and each unit is slightly different priced. Um, and that includes some onboarding and professional development from ARC. So what comes on and for us is uh sub-time or time-sheated time for teachers to participate in that. Um, and all of this, again, is paid for out of grant funding, so our dual language funding, um, our ML funding, and then um right now, Title One and Title Two funding paid for the overages.
That's exciting to hear that. I'm curious. Um, I know that the initial library setup fee is, is because you're purchasing one-time costs for some of them. What is our annual year-over-year cost looking to be roughly?
There is a license that goes along. That's the assessment piece, the Aneel. I don't have it right in front of me. Do you guys remember off the top of your head? It's a portion, I want to say, it's just a couple thousand dollars per, per grade level. It's, it, it's nominal in terms of what we pay for assessment. I mean, I ready cost us.
Yes, it does.
It's pretty nominal. And then um, we were actually partnering with several different school districts, Everett uh School District, uh Mount Vernon School District, and Highline School District, and we're piggybacking on a lot of their professional development as well, which helps save us um some money in the long run.
Are they using ARC as well in their elementary?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, so if you don't, if you have questions now, I'll take them. If not, and you think of questions, please ask us. We're happy to get that. It's um, the ARC was a bit of a challenge, just so you know, when we first started the pilot, um, it, it, like any literacy curriculum, it's a lot. And um, it's, our teachers uh really had to wrestle with a big shift in their practice. But honestly, like, they've just done such an amazing job. The trainers have been amazing. Um, we've really um, come a long way, and then now with our partnership with Mario Palma, who was one of the authors of ARC. I, I think we're, we're really set in the right direction, and we're super excited, so.
That's better than translating a different curriculum for English literacy and doing a poor job with the students that it just doesn't work linguistically, so.
Absolutely.
It's probably, it's work, but it's less work than what they were doing and probably with better results, so.
Yeah, we're, we're excited, so.
Thank you, guys.
Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Hey, Agenda Item six point zero three, we have Policy thirty two forty one, Student Discipline. This is our second reading. Is there a motion?
I moved that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approves the revisions made to Policy thirty two forty one, Student Discipline.
Was there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approves the revisions made to Policy thirty two forty one, Student Discipline. Uh, discussion? Okay, all in favor, raise your hand. The Agenda Item has passed five to zero. Agenda Item six point zero four, Policy sixty eight eighty one, Disposal of Surplus Equipment and/or Materials. Also, the second reading, is there a motion?
I moved that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approves the revisions made to Policy sixty eight eighty one, Disposal of Surplus Equipment and/or Materials.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approves the revisions made to Policy sixty eight eighty one, Disposal of Surplus Equipment and/or Materials. Discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. The Agenda Item has passed five to zero. Moving on to Agenda Item seven point zero nine, Approval of the Consent Agenda. Is there a motion?
I moved that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approves all items as listed and presented in the consent agenda dated May twelfth, twenty twenty five.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approves all items as listed and presented in the consent agenda dated There's a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approves all items as listed and presented in the consent agenda dated May twelfth, twenty twenty-five. All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed five to zero. Item eight point zero one, superintendent update, and we've got superintendent word board.
All right, so we are at the time of year where we have lots of uh data com- coming in to let us know, are we hitting the mark in a lot of the different areas that we've been trying to uh improve upon? So we have our S back, S back, as as Sophia mentioned. We have our I ready data after that. Of course, we have our monthly attendance data. And then we also have, I'm sure as as parents, at least four of you filled out the panorama survey that that goes out as well. Yes, thank you for doing that. So a lot of data coming in, and I think there's a lot of evidence thus far as it comes in that um our staff, which I'm very proud of, is taking that data as it comes in to make, help them make meaningful um actions to get better results. So super encouraging. I try not to look at any of it as it's coming in, because you can do that, because I just don't think it's that healthy for me, because you know. Is it, what's he saying, Chuck? You're kind of a farmer of the hay's in the barn. Is that the, so it's like, it's gotta wait, see how it goes. So um, but I couldn't resist uh at at looking at some of the data, because Noah, one of our just fantastic assistant principals at Monroe High School, sent me an email this morning and said, you've got to check out our tenth grade ELA data. So I'm like, oh, here we go. I'm going to have to log in. And uh so I I'll share a little bit about that. Our tenth grade students at Monroe High School, the last three years that that ELA, the percentage of students who have passed that assessment has been stuck right at sixty percent, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. Uh, so far, I think we have about ten more assessments to be scored. Sixty-seven percent of the students are at uh grade level standard. So that's fantastic. I can't wait to unpack that with the admin team and the the ELA staff at the high school to talk about, how did you get those phenomenal results? So so we were really happy about that. More to come there. Attendance data, we're still tracking very well. Our theory of action was if we can get kids to attend school more, they will achieve at higher levels. And so this past April, uh, two thousand twenty-two, we were, we, our average daily attendance was eighty-eight percent in April. Last year, eighty-nine point four percent, and this year, ninety-two point six. So we're still tracking really well. The the uh strategies have been very impressive, and it's been different at each school dependent upon that student population. But it's just been a blast watching how we're getting a lot of the similar results, results, but the strategies are so wildly different. And really, it's really partially about just ensuring that kids and families feel very welcome. And when they're missed, they, when they're not there, they know they're missed. And so it's, it's, I don't think it's really rocket science, just application of this great practice. So again, proud of our staff for their efforts there. I hope Hugo and Deborah are still here. They are wonderful. So um only sixteen percent of our schools in the state were recognized by the State Board of Education for um exceptional progress last school year. And uh we have a school that was recognized for closing achievement gaps, and that was uh Frank Wagner Elementary. So way to go, leadership back there. Yeah, the cool thing is we accept, e- expect to see more of that out of, out of all of our schools. You saw their, was it their third grade team i- in action a few weeks ago? That's the kind of work that's going to get more results just like that. So it's just fantastic. Uh, the other piece, I'll just share a little bit. Um, this, this is just a little bit of a dipstick into the data we're seeing coming back thus far. I I've, I'm always really interested in perceptions about our school district. And um, and it's a hard thing to change perceptions, but we, but we measure perception through that panorama data. So we'll do a a full extensive panorama, a deep dive into all that data. We have three years' worth of data now. As I was looking through it today, and again, I was gonna, gonna wait till some quiet time to do it, but I couldn't help looking in. Because I'm, I'm, I'm curious about perceptions of our overall social and learning climate of our schools. So parents are asked that. Um, I haven't really disaggregated it, disaggregated the data by school. But uh just two years ago, only fifty-eight percent of our students had a favorable perception of the social and learning climate of our schools. Last year, sixty-one percent made, made some progress there. This year, sixty-eight percent. So it's climbing far rapidly than I would have guessed. Um, and that doesn't happen by accident. It happens by our building leaders, our teacher leaders, our teachers, our staff, digging into that data in August, which they will this August, make different decisions based on that data and a- apply some different strategies and getting better results. So um it's just that implementation science paying off. So uh just wanted to celebrate our, our, our staff and all their efforts. And we'll do a deeper dive as we go into the summer and get more results, so. That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Okay, moving on to agenda item nine point zero one. We have board reports and or comments. All jumped at once. All right, Director Barnes.
I guess I'll go. So just to keep the positivity train going, uh, this has been an amazing board meeting, being able to celebrate our amazing educators, our employees of the month, our students headed off to nationals, the amazing things with coming up with our dual language program and just the strides that we're making all across this district. So um the congratulations, Sophia already hit on this a little bit earlier, but the tennis team, uh, we're incredibly proud of all the athletes who competed at the West Coast North Tournament for the first time in over fifteen years. Every Monroe girls tennis player placed in the tournament. That is huge. It was a very historic achievement. And so I just want to give a shout out to every single one of these girls. We have Jada Bomers who got second place. And again, I apologize if I'm getting any of these names wrong. Emerson Hartway got fourth place. Tanisha Segren and Amiko Spangler got fourth place in doubles. And Keely Reed and Rowan Grant got sixth in doubles. So truly amazing. Congratulations. I can't wait to see what this group does at districts. Also, a shout out to an S V E C, so Sky Valley Education Center student, who had the opportunity to serve as a page in the Washington State House of Representatives. And that is Rena Shaw-Waldman. And she got sponsored by Representative Larry Springer, who represents the Kirkland area. And as a page, she was able to help keep things running smoothly at the Capitol, delivering messages, presenting flags and distributing material, while also learning firsthand how our government works. Uh, so just a huge congratulations to Rena. That's a great accomplishment. And what an opportunity to be there and be able to experience that. Also, our amazing sports medicine students, they went to state, which is incredible. They are very hardworking, dedicated and passionate, and it has really taken them far. So I wanted to make sure that I shouted them out and said congratulations to them. We also had uh Scarlett Bryn and Imogen here to represent their boards. But I also wanted to make sure that I um shouted out the other students who were recognized as well for this. So the special awards for scholarships and research, Scarlett Gilbert had the outstanding entry related to historical literature, and she was here this evening. Joanna Guthrie had the National Maritime Historical Society Award. And then Emma Jean Shaw also got the Washington State Archivist Award and Outstanding Entry in Washington State History. So we also had uh Kaia Knight, who placed third with her junior historical paper. Penny Dunells and Tyler Fields had their fourth place senior group website. Miles Sansoni had fourth place junior individual performance. And Adam Graham had sixth place senior historical paper. Imogen Shaw, who was here to that tonight, she placed first in her junior individual exhibit. Scarlett Gilbert, who was here tonight, placed second for junior historical paper. So congratulations, way to represent the school district and work hard and really apply all of the things that you're learning through your amazing education. Uh, another celebration, because we haven't been here in a month, so there's a lot hanging there with me. We've got West Coast North Champions, our boys soccer team. Huge congratulations to them. I was able to go out and watch their game on Saturday. I don't remember who they were playing, but we won, and it was quite intense. I didn't realize boys' soccers, boys' soccer games could be so intense and so physical. But we won, and it was amazing to to watch them and to celebrate that with them. Also, we have our M H S Bearcat Spotlight for April. And so yes, I'm going to go through and read the names of every single one of these students. We have Madeline Balloon uh who got animal for animal, yeah, I can't talk, animal biology uh for CTE, Lilian Boer for English, Michael Carpenter for Algebra Two. Oh my goodness. And then Alex, oh, this last name is cut off, for Culinary Arts for CTE. Uh, Vivian Du Coing for Marketing Three, Ivor Griffiths for Sports Medicine Three, Gianmarco Lindsay for AP Computer Science, Christopher Moreno Robos for English, and Ella Prokosh for Art Teacher Assistance. And just a reminder that this award spotlights and recognizes students whose actions embody the M H S core values of purpose, lifelong learning, unity and support. So lots, lots going on with our incredible students. And then I had the honor of attending the M H S Multicultural Night that happened, which was incredible. I swear, every year it gets better and better, the things that the students bring, the displays that they have, the food that they have. It is, it's amazing to watch. And this year, they also had performances, some music and different things. Uh, truly interactive this year. So it was fun to be able to go to that. And then also the spectacular at Sky Valley, where the entire school put forth art projects, different things that they've done from woodworking, metalworking, kite making from the seventeenth century. Boards like are presented here today. You've got um literary works that they do, pictures, videos, all kinds of different things. It's amazing to go and celebrate the accomplishments uh and achievements of our students. And then just a shout out to all the students from the FFA and their plant sale that they put on. Those fuchsia baskets are absolutely incredible, and I get to admire them every single morning. And the tomatoes and cilantro that I bought as well, uh, just phenomenal. I couldn't even believe it. And they did an amazing job with their customer service, the way that they helped you check in and check out. It was truly a great experience all the way around. And I encourage you, if you didn't have a chance to go and partake in it this year, mark your calendars for next year and make sure to go and support our students. And with that, I will be done with the celebrations. I hope everyone has an amazing week.
Went to uh our community event that we had uh last week, where we had uh families come in and we had displays from uh different services throughout, throughout the community, mental health, Boys and Girls Club, uh VOA, and that's part of our uh strategic plan. Uh, family and community members connected to schools and valued partners. We also had a very good speaker on uh technology, uh instructing parents given them tools and ideas to help students and with screen time. And uh very, very good presentation. You know, technology is always on my mind, the the advances that we have. The presentation tonight, one of the gals talked about uh researching by microfiche. And in nineteen seventy-five, I was in, stationed in Germany, and we ordered parts looking at microfiche. And we had uh punch cards where we would order parts and they would come in. And it was the technology that was used for ordering parts for nuclear missiles and Jeeps and trucks. And I just think about the uh, the AI that I use right now, mostly Copilot, rewinding my, my emails so much better, helping with presentations and speeches. And I have a convention coming up, and it's planning my, my speech addressing the group uh in the association. So anyway, technology is rolling along. That's all.
Uh, we are about a month away from graduation. That's exciting, right? The first one happens, yeah, Sophia's graduating. Yep, and then her position opens up. All right, got to encourage all the high schoolers to apply for that position. And then um I was able to attend the LSU Multicultural Assembly. So it's put on by the Latino Student Union at the high school. Hands down, one of the best assemblies I have been to ever at the high school. And that was even as a student and now as an adult. One of the best ones. They had so much dancing and music, the presentations. Um, I want to go every year, so I hope I get invited. I bought a shirt to support LSU as well, got one for my son, also stole that one from him. And um they started off with flag presentations, and it uh, it was a presentation of every country that's represented at our high school. And so we had stu-, they had students walking out with those flags. It was a beautiful, beautiful event. I loved most that uh it was so well received by all the students. I think that had the best energy. The, it had so much spirit, and everyone was so respectful and considerate and rooting all the students on, because all the presentations were put on by students. So shout out to the high school and for the leadership team up there, because again, one of the best assemblies I've been through at Monroe High School. Sorry, Mr. Willie, but this kids, the kids did a great job. All right, it is six oh six P M. And tonight's meeting is adjourned.